Good evening, everybody. Funny how a gavel will bring everybody quiet. I'm not a judge up here. Can't throw you in jail. Welcome to the October 28, 2025 School Board of Manatee County Meeting. I want to officially call this meeting to order. We're going to kick it over to Mr. Kennedy for the District Vision and then the invocation.
Thank you, sir. First, the vision. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. For tonight's invocation, first, I'd like to ask that we all take a moment to keep the residents of Jamaica in our thoughts and prayers. We were in their position just last year. They have a very dangerous hurricane bearing down on them right now. So let's keep them. We have many students and families in Manatee County of Jamaican descent. So let's keep them in our hearts tonight. So for the invocation, I found a poem by someone named Everett Hoagland. I don't know if he's any relation to Joe Hoagland over at Stewart Elementary. And oddly enough, the poem is called "Invocation." So I hope you'll indulge me just for a moment. Architect of icebergs, snowflakes, crystals, rainbows, sand grains, dust motes, atoms. Mason whose tools are glaciers, rain, rivers, ocean. Chemist who made blood of seawater, bone of minerals in stone, milk of love. Whatever you are, I know this. You are everywhere in all the ever-changing above whirling around us. Yes, in the loose strands, in the rough weave of the common cloth, threaded with our DNA in the hubbed, spoke, spinning wheel that is our world, solar system, galaxy, universe. Help us to see ourselves in creation and all creation in ourselves, ourselves in one another. Remind those of us who like connections made with similes, metaphors, symbols. All of us are, everything is already connected. Remind us as oceans go, so go we. As air goes, so go we. As other life forms on Earth go, so go we. As our planet goes, so go we. Creator who has inspired, in the beginning was the Word. Edit our thoughts or ethics are our politics and our actions the afterlives of our words. Thank you.
Thanks.
That was lovely.
Thank you. If anybody will rise for the color guard at the presentation of colors here coming from Braden River High School, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance once you're here. They are escorted by Master Sergeant Johnny Browning. The members are Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Brynlee Johnson, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Marfil Trejo, Cadet Major Kaya Peters, Cadet Major Diana Crew.
Mark time, march. Colors, halt. Right, face. Terry, colors. Reeds and arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Order, arms. Order, colors. Right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you, may be seated. Thank you to the Braden River High School Color Guard for the presentation of the colors. We're moving on to item number six, board, the approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under the Agenda Amendments on October 28, 2025. Agenda was updated October 27, 2025 and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. Some of the presentations and things like that were added on. Couple different HR things were added to the agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A second.
And a second from Mr. Kennedy. I am not in, I legislate, so we're going to vote manually. You're logging in too. All those in favor to approve the agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item number seven, the approval of the minutes. Dr. Breslin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The superintendent recommends approval of the minutes of the October 7, 2025 School Board Meeting and the October 10, 2025 School Board Workshop.
So moved.
All second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. Any changes needed by the board?
No.
No?
All right, we're going to go ahead and vote manually still, old school way. Thought Dr. Breslin would help me out a little bit and go a little bit slower, but she cruised right through those minutes. So all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, it passes five to zero. All right, exciting time of the meeting usually when we get to have celebrations and recognition. So Ms. Carter, just come on down and you can present our celebrations for this evening.
Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Breslin, and our honored guest. I have the pleasure to be before you today with Ms. Kathia Johnson, one of our valuable executive directors who oversees Sammaset Elementary School. Every day, a student is in school is a step towards success. And this month, we saw a powerful example of our community stepping up to make that success possible. This month, Sammaset Elementary was provided with a generous $10,000 donation from the Bradenton Kiwanis and the Student Attendance Support Incorporated. This donation is a dedication, excuse me, is dedicated to strengthening our student attendance initiatives and celebrating the learning gains our students are achieving. As a community, we are committed to improving student attendance. When our families, our schools, and our county work together, we ensure that every child reaches their fullest potential. This special moment on campus earlier this month shows how strong our partnerships are and how deeply our community believes in our students.
We are beyond grateful for organizations that go the extra mile to help our students succeed. Tonight, we are honored to welcome two, three, I'm sorry, three champions of that mission. Dr. Jonathan Mullis, President of the Bradenton Kiwanis. Ms. Donna Ray Smith, Founder and President of Student Attendance Support Incorporated. And Roxy Galligan, Board Member and Purchasing Specialist. Thank you all for your leadership and your generosity. Your support reminds us that showing up matters, not just for students, but for all of us. So.
We're just so honored to be here with, at this board meeting and with these, all these wonderful people. So I'll just would like to take, take a minute for, to say a few words. We partner with five schools in Manatee County. And at the beginning of this school year, Kevin Chapman came and said, "Sammaset Elementary is a fantastic school. It's all hands on deck to help this school improve school attendance and also include academics." And also to make the kids feel at home and welcome and loved and help them want to go to school. So he said, you know, is there anything you can do? So I had a meeting with my board and with my team and said, "What are we going to do?" And we approached Mike Bear, who was then President of Bradenton Kiwanis, and explained what was happening. And within two weeks, they donated a lot of money to the effort, to the effort that the principal and the other administrators of the schools, school was hoping to support. So we're just honored to be able to help. And we're honored to be here tonight. And we can't say enough about how fantastic the administrators and the school staff and the nurses and the lunch ladies and the custodians and everyone are at the schools in this county. You know, we're just a bunch of gray-haired old ladies, except for Roxy, who who are just super happy to help. So that's who we are and we thank you for all of the work that you do. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I sent a photo with the board, if that's okay?
Yeah, of course. Yes.
On three, we're going to say, "Showing up matters." Ready? One, two, three.
Showing up matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. For our next celebration and recognition, we are going to recognize three exceptional Lakewood Ranch High School seniors whose voices, values, and vision earn them the top honors at the Rotary Club of Bradenton's Constitution Essay Contest. At this time, I like Kyle Scott, Zachariah Kersey, and Chloe Drappback. I'd also like to ask their AP Government Teacher, Mr. Benjamin Hall, and Lakewood Ranch School Assistant Principal Samantha Biggs to join us as well. Each of these, each of these students brought a unique and powerful perspective to the question, "What does the Constitution mean to me?" Their essays explored themes of patriotism, independent thought, and equality, reminding us that the Constitution is not just a historic document, but a living promise that continues to shape our lives and our future. These students' success reflects the strength of our educators and the supportive learning environment that empowers students to think critically and express themselves with clarity and conviction. We'd also, at this time, like to recognize the Rotary Club of Bradenton, Mr. Tom Richmond, and Mrs. Kathy Golson, and Tim Milligan at this time. We value their continued partnership and the investment in civic education. Their support and guidance in this essay contest provide students with a meaningful opportunity to engage in with our foundational country principles and develop their voices as future leaders. To our students, your future is bright, your voices are heard, and congratulations on this outstanding achievement. At this time, I'd like to ask their parents to come up for another group photo.
Sure.
Yes.
Come on up.
At this, at this time, I'd like to ask the President of the Rotary Club to make a few comments, if that's okay.
There you go. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, honored guests, we wanted to come to you tonight just to say thank you.
Thank you.
For allowing us to be a part of this community for over 100 years. The Rotary Club here in Bradenton has been working with young people since our very beginning, and we're not going to stop. The very motto that we live by, service above self, means more to us than you could ever imagine. My friends represent many, many years of, of service in, not only in this county, this county, but in also other states. I've been a Rotarian since 1997. And I can tell you in all of that, one of the things that we've done the most is to try to focus on the youth and what the youth need in our community. Through this essay contest, and I hate to even call it a contest, this essay time for them to pour their heart out and to tell us their stories and their family stories of who they are and where they came from and what the freedom living here in the United States means to them. Every year, we hear it. It brings us to our knees. Our young people are going to be our leaders in the next year, two, three, or four. And we've been asking all of them, get involved. When you find yourself at college, find an organization, whether it's us, the Kiwanis, whoever it would be, and give back just as your communities are giving back to you. I tell you, in the years to come, you're going to see these three young people do more than they have ever imagined in their life. And it's not because of what we poured into them or that we've written them a check and said, "Your first, your second, and your third." But we've given them the understanding of their importance in our government and in our community and in organizations like the Rotary Club. I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and to say, we stand ready to do more with you and for our young people here in this community. And we give, man, a lot of praise to the folks that teach them and the folks that honor them each and every day and their parents. You can tell, they put a lot into them. Thank you so much and may God bless you.
Thank you.
I did play a little joke and told the students that they were going to have to read their essays in their entirety tonight. So I apologize about that. But we will work with the club to make sure that we can share those essays with the community. They were beautiful to, I had the privilege of being able to listen to them and they were really empowering and beautiful and we definitely should share that with the community. For our next recognition, I would like to ask the following individuals to please come forward. Jamie Warrington. Rhonda, Rhonda Ralston, Ralston. And then Andre Cozer. Jay Robinson. Dot Hurd. Lester Odinger. And Vasna Kim.
Thank you so much. Make sure, plenty of room. Every school day, families across Manatee County place their trust in us to safely transport their loved ones to and from school. The team before you tonight understands that with that trust comes an immense responsibility. And they carry it with professionalism, compassion, and unwavering dedication. And that commitment extend, extended far beyond our county lines. On the night of October 12, students from St. Lucie County were leaving the Lakewood Ranch area after a band competition when there was a tragic incident that rendered some of their buses inoperable on State Road 70. Stranded and far from home, they needed help. And thanks to the individuals before you and the collaborative network of school districts across the state, St. Lucie County knew they could count on the school district of Manatee County. Without hesitation, our transportation team stepped in. They spent the night on the road safely transporting those students back to their school and then turned around and drove back to Manatee County. And I think if I'm right, Jamie, they arrived around 5:30 in the morning the next day?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my goodness. This act of selfless service is a powerful example of what it means to be over the Florida's educational community. And it's not just about buses and routes, it's about people. It's about showing up when others need us the most. And to this incredible team, we thank you for your courage, your compassion, and your commitment, not only to students here, but to across the state. And at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Breslin, our superintendent, for a few remarks.
First and foremost, thank you. You all got out of your comfortable beds and dressed really was an emergency situation. And it actually gets me choked up because I just imagine those parents wanting their, their children home. So thank you so much. I did receive a handwritten note from the superintendent in St. Lucie. They are beyond grateful, as we are, to have such dedicated employees to, to every student, no matter where that student may reside. So thank you so much. And we have some beautiful superintendent coins to pass out as well.
If the board would like, we could do a curved photo, if that's possible? Thank you very much.
All right, we have one more. It's last, but definitely not the least. We're super excited about the next one. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Ms. Annie and Ken Clark of the Clark Financial Partnership to present a special awards, one of our very own team members.
Good evening, board and Dr. Breslin. My name is Annie Clark. My husband Ken and I own Clark Financial Partners here in Manatee County. And we are honored to stand here tonight to present to one of the gentlemen that has made such an impression in my life since I have known him. We work with the school district employees with their retirement planning. And National Life Group in Value Teachers is one of the companies that we represent. And National Life Group has a foundation. And that foundation accentuates individuals that are employed by the school district that have gone above and beyond, both in the district and in their community. So I'd like to read just a little bit about why Mr. Omar Edwards was nominated. As a Manatee County native, Mr. Edwards was educated in the public schools. He joined the local boys' club in Bradenton when he was six and participated in many events. With the support of his family and the club, he excelled in school and participated in three sports at Southeast High School, receiving a full scholarship to play football at Ole Miss upon his graduation in 1993. While attending Ole Miss, he earned two bachelor's degrees, one in public administration and the other in social work. His commitment to public service led him to many community projects. His commitment to public service led him to many community projects. After college, he began his career in education as a career counselor and later as a program manager for high school students at Manatee Technical Institute, which inspired him to earn his master's degree in educational leadership. This experience led him to two areas close to his heart, the Boys and Girls Club and Manatee County School District. He currently is serving as the Associate Director of Strategic Planning and Initiatives for Manatee County School District. As a faithful community servant, Mr. Edwards is an excellent motivational speaker for community events presenting on topics focused on youth empowerment, college and career readiness, and the How to Dress to Impress program. Mr. Edwards also volunteers at the local toy drives, Easter egg hunts, and health screening fairs, and serves on various Boys and Girl Clubs committees. During the football season, you will see him volunteer coaching at Bayshore Elementary, at Bayshore and Palmetto High Schools. And Mr. Edwards is a member of Rogers Community United Methodist Church in Bradenton, a life member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity, and a Manatee Chamber of Commerce Education and Workforce Committee member. Currently, he is the chairman of the Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County Corporate Board, a team member in the accreditation process for schools, and a member of the Association for Curriculum Development and Advanced Educational Accreditation Committee. Mr. Edwards believes his upbringing has brought him to where he is in his life. His mother and grandmother taught him to treat people how you want to be treated and do what's right, even if it may be unpopular. And when I met Omar, he made a very, very impactful memory in my life. I saw that he wanted to give back to community. He's always there welcoming, having a conversation, and just a gentle, gentle giant. And so with that, I put in a nomination to National Life Group's foundation. Omar was accepted, and we need the community's help though. On the back table is a flyer that has a QR code because National Life Foundation will award the grand prize winner of this particular nomination $20,000, which is split between the recipient and the school district that they are from.
Oh, wow.
So we need your help. We have until December 31st to get all of our comments from parents, teachers, fellow board members, fellow associates in the community to help Omar be our life changer of the year here in Manatee County. So thank you for this opportunity.
We need students also.
Students too.
Omar, we would like to present you with this certificate to hang in your office, should you like to do that.
Wow. Good evening, Board Chairman Tote, Madam Superintendent, Dr. Lori Breslin, members of the board. I want to take this moment to express my heartfelt gratitude for being nominated for the Life Changer of the Year Award by Annie Clark and with the National Group. It's an incredible honor to be recognized this way, and I'm truly humbled by this nomination. This recognition is not just about me. It reflects a collective efforts of students, families, educators, leaders, that I've had the privilege to work alongside for the last 27 years. Every day, I'm inspired by resiliency, creativity, commitment to those around me, and the energy that fuels my passion for this work each and every day. I'm inspired each and every day to prepare students to be ready to learn, ready to grow, and ready for life. To be considered a life changer is a powerful reminder of the responsibility that we carry about shaping the future of our students and our community. I remain committed to the mission, and I'm deeply thankful for the opportunity to serve. Thank you again for your support and allowing me to be part of this meaningful journey. Thank you.
And then my family is here as well, Freddie, Everest Cami, and the dean.
Congratulations, Omar.
Thank you.
We've got to get everybody down here.
Thank you for being here.
Vote early, vote often.
That concludes our celebrations for this evening. I do want to let you know that we will be putting the link so that our community can support Omar on our social media and our website. Thank you.
Yeah, encourage everybody, there are the handouts in the back there. So encourage everybody here to grab it, and we will get that up on the district website and Facebook and all that good stuff so we can make Omar the champion and the life changer. That'd be fantastic. Good stuff. All right, this is going to move us from our celebrations to public comment. We do have four public comments this evening. Just some new names on here that I see, just kind of a reminder, public comment. Board policy, we do not engage with questions and answering with the public comment. So just beware of that. Three minutes to speak will be above our heads up here. As your speaker, I believe at 30 seconds, it goes yellow. Maybe that's red, maybe a minute's yellow, 30, red. I don't know, you'll hear a ding. And, but you get three minutes to speak. When I call you up, come on up to the podium. First is Rennie Fink, and then Jack Lawrence. Yeah, you can hand it to the clerk, and then she'll bring her.
You're ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rennie Fink. I teach both financial math and AP Human Geography at Lakewood Ranch High School. I've been a teacher for 20 years and 15 years here in Manatee County. On October 16th, each of you were emailed documentation and photos relating to the issue that I'm addressing today. I'm here tonight to speak about the mold and air quality issues in our school. No one should have to choose between their health and their career, yet under my rheumatologist's guidance, I cannot return until the issue is fully remediated. Mold exposure carries serious, well-documented health risks, including respiratory problems, fatigue, headaches, memory loss, and other long-term effects. I've been out for over three weeks, using my sick leave to recover and protect myself from an unsafe environment beyond my control. This was not an easy decision. I love my job, my classroom, and my students. Many teachers are experiencing symptoms as documented in risk reports and emails but feel trapped, unable to take the time off. Meanwhile, students are repeatedly ill, unaware that their learning environment may be making them sick. At least 14 rooms I know of are significantly impacted. This problem has persisted for years. Risk management reports confirm recurring mold, yet responses remain superficial. The pattern is predictable. Mold is wiped from the surfaces, items are discarded, and staff are told that all buildings in Florida have mold. The contamination at Lakewood Ranch High School far exceeds safe levels, and EPA remediation guidelines are not being followed. This year, the visible mold that was supposedly treated in June has already returned. Many rooms have not even been addressed. The last two years, teachers have returned to classes to find their rooms and items literally covered in mold. Clearly, as you can see in the photos, what is being done is not addressing the root cause. Do you turn your air conditioning in your home off when you're away? No. Yet in our schools, the AC is shut off every night, every weekend, and all summer. In Florida's climate, that creates the perfect condition for mold and condensation, violating EPA guidelines for safe humidity. I've shared photos of water dripping from vents and walls and items covered in mold. Water has accumulated in hallways to the point that students have slipped and fallen. Several teachers have resorted to buying dehumidifiers, which remove gallons of water every day. The lack of comprehensive remediation, combined with HVAC money-saving practices, has created a cycle of exposure that endangers students and staff. I urge this board to take immediate action, including professional mold remediation and testing, and review of HVAC policies and commitment to ongoing monitoring and public reporting. I am deeply committed to my students and colleagues. Everyone deserves safe, healthy environments, and the conditions at Lakewood Ranch High School are serious. They are a safety concern that must be addressed. I really just want to get back to my class and my students. I miss them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Lawrence, followed by Edwin Severt. Sorry if I mispronounced that name.
Mr. Severt's gone.
Oh, was he the one you were talking about earlier?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm sorry. So Jack Lawrence, and then Martha Jacobs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Lawrence, and I'm a student at Lakewood Ranch High School. I'm speaking about the mold problems at my school. For years, students, teachers, staff, and parents have known about issues with mold in our school. I personally have seen mold in almost every building. Now that this issue is being raised again, it is important to emphasize what changes are necessary. In an East County Observer article from 2017, a school district spokesperson dismissed the issue as prevalent everywhere in Florida, only stressing the importance of removing visible mold. This is the same attitude of a five-year-old who is picking up the toys in their room and just shoving it all in the closet, calling it clean. And now, because of this district's past actions, or rather inaction, we arrived at today's situation. In that same article from eight years ago, district officials said that turning off the AC may have been a cause of this issue. So why does the AC still turn off every weekend? With how often the AC breaks down, I've seen people slip on the sweaty floors that perspire after mere hours of no ventilation. Just imagine what it's like on the weekends. As far as I'm concerned, this is a public health issue. Because of the district's inability to learn from the past, we have arrived at the same problem as we did eight years ago. While short-term costs may have been saved by disabling the AC on weekends, the long-term effect is that thousands of students have been exposed to toxic air, and now you have to pay the cost to fix it. Therefore, let's be proactive going forward. Keep the AC on over weekends so that our schools are no longer sticky, humid, mold-breeding grounds. And while we're on the topic of being proactive, don't let schools of hope infest our schools either. Our public schools are already toxic from mold. We don't need corporations to poison our school system too. As a student, I have the right to get my education without being exposed to health issues, and we all have the right to get our education without having to worry about our schools being hijacked by money-hungry corporations. Thank you.
Martha Jacobs?
I'm at that stage where... I'd see better up close. Out the glasses, you know, your faces might not be as clear.
Oh, good.
Anyway, good evening. My name is Martha Jacobs. I am a Manatee County resident. I would like to speak on two topics that both happen, in my opinion, to fall under item number 11.19 regarding the remediation services. We have two Manatee County public schools so far that are being targeted for takeover by for-profit charter companies under the Schools of Hope program. As it currently stands, the law allows a private operator to use public facilities and depend on district services, including custodial and maintenance, without paying full cost. Basically, these corporations move into public buildings rent-free while our own classrooms stand the risk of going unmaintained. The Schools of Hope expansion profits off of any neglect. The agenda tonight includes hundreds of thousands of dollars in contracts for new construction, yet only one short-line item for remediation. $125,000 is not really enough to make or keep our schools safe. It's a dollar amount that says, "Well, we see there's a problem, but we're not going to fix it." Mold is not just a maintenance and health issue. It's a symbol of what happens when leadership gives up on public education. When a district ignores safety, it creates the excuse for private companies to move in and call it progress. The same system that lets classrooms decay is the one opening the door to privatization. If this board truly believes in public schools, it must prove it by investing in their care and safety. Please stop spending on expansion while ignoring the buildings we already have. Start protecting the people inside of them. I understand your hands are somewhat tied by the way the law is currently written, but please be proactive in keeping these Schools of Hope out of Manatee County. Maintaining the current schools is an easy start to that. Students' health and safety must always come before politics and partnerships. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and thank you for all you do for the students and teachers in Manatee County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comment. Thank you for those who publicly commented. I'll save any response from the district may have till time perhaps to do that, so. All right, moving on to item number 10, reports and presentations. Mr. Jensen, I believe this is your area?
Absolutely. Board members, Superintendent Breslin. Thank you all. We're excited to have two members from our curriculum team here today to share with you the instructional materials adoption plan for this year, which includes the world languages adoptions. And so we have Tiffany Spradling, our Director of Secondary Curriculum, and Erin Chapman, who's our Coordinator of Instructional Projects. And they'll walk you through the process, the way the community gives input and participates in the process, and kind of what the timeline for the year is. Take it away.
Good evening, Chair Tote, board members, Superintendent Breslin. Hope you're having a lovely evening. As Mr. Jensen shared, I'm going to go through the instructional materials process with Ms. Chapman, our Coordinator of Instructional Projects, specifically focusing on world languages, which is included in FLDOE's adoption cycle for the '25-'26 school year. A reminder that our instructional materials adoptions are driven by both Florida law and school board policy 2520, which requires the school board to adopt and provide adequate instructional materials to students enrolled in the school district of Manatee County.
Included in this year's state adoption are new instructional materials for our world languages courses. Pending your approval next month, we will review and recommend adoption of materials for Spanish and French, which are offered at our middle and high schools. And we currently provide world language instruction for over 3,700 students in the district. Adopting new materials will provide much-needed digital and instructional advancements in world language instruction for our teachers and students, such as virtual speaking and listening practice and updated instructional methods that align with modern world language practices.
All right, on this slide, you see a, you know, very simple 10-step process for what annual adoptions look like each year. So I will quickly go through what that process is, and then Ms. Chapman will be able to share how that will look like this year for world languages. So if you start at the top, our first step, and I should mention too, as we are doing our adoption, the state is also doing adoption processes to get their adoption list. They do their own reviews, which I'll speak to. And also in this 10-step process, some things are running concurrently. So there's a lot of moving gears and wheels going on in the process. So to kick things off, you, as our board, approve the adoption process for that year. And then for this year, for world languages, you'll see that as an item on next month's agenda on the 10th. From there, once approved by each of you, we make a public announcement for the community and for SD... and for SDMC staff, and that both shares the process, as well as all of the opportunities we provide for our staff and the public to provide input and feedback related to the, what we call bids, that are on the instructional materials process, excuse me, included in our instructional materials process for the year. Before, going to the third one, before the adoption year begins, the state of Florida releases what's called a short bid list, and that is a list of the publishers and their titles that intend to participate in the instructional materials process for that year. From that list, that state, on the state side, they have expert reviewers and they have community members that are reviewing those materials for both primarily their alignment to state standards and that they teach those state standards well and, you know, thoroughly, but also that they meet statutory requirements for what students in Florida need. On our end, we're doing what's called a course call, and that's where we contact the publishers through a platform called EdCredible, where we collect a lot of data during this process and we present to you later. And that is a chance for these publishers to share their intention to participate in our district adoption in Manatee County. So from that short bid list, we then invite publishers to participate. As, as the publishers are providing their intent to participate, we're also having our IT team do what's called a pre-screening process, where they evaluate and determine that the digital components of the materials align to what our students and teachers need. So that's kind of, again, one of those things that's happening concurrently along with our course call and with our other processes that are in place. And while our, while our IT department is reviewing, our curriculum team provides the district staff and public with access to both digital materials and print materials, and those are sample materials, I should say, that can be viewed anytime during the process. So we, we keep print, physical materials at the PSC, the Professional Support Center, and we also offer, invite the publishers to a preview night where they can showcase their materials for the public or for any teachers that want to partici, don't want to necessarily participate, but they want to come and view and hear from the publishers themselves. And then digital access is on a website that we will publish pending your approval on November 12th, following our Veterans Day holiday, and that includes all of the processes and all those opportunities for them to participate. So every piece of information the public would need and our SDMC staff need is on that instructional materials adoption page on the district website. Okay, so then we move to our adoption committees being recruited. We pull from, we invite teachers, administrators, parents of SDMC students, community members in Manatee County. They're part of our adoption committee that convenes in, that is scheduled right now for January, pending, again, your approval. And they really delve into, that, the group then delves up into that, the standards alignment and all those, the resources it provides teachers and students. We also train that committee on the process itself and then in Sunshine Law, how to comply with Sunshine Law. All right, so again, that committee really delves deeply into the standards and how they, how the resources provide what teachers and students need. And then that committee does what's called a ranking recommendation, where we take the publishers that were presented and rank them in order of their preference of that alignment to state standards and to what resources and tools they provide teachers and students so that instruction can happen very seamlessly. That rank, those rankings, of course, presented to you following that, the completion of that committee's review for your approval. And then we enter what's called the 30-day objection window, where the public can give feedback. Again, all of that process is on that instructional materials page. We go through the 30-day objection process, everything looks great, and then pending the state adoptions lists, state adoption lists, which has done those state reviews, we then ask to purchase the highest-ranked of our rankings, right, the highest-ranked publisher that's also on the adoption list. So in, in a perfect world, our first choice is also on the state's adoption list, and we can go ahead and move with purchase in the spring. All right, easy 10-step process. Yes, Ms. Felton?
Easy 10.
I just want to confirm, because we often get comments about, well, why did you, why did the district pick this, and is it aligned to standards, and da-da-da-da, right? So I would like to point out that we pick things that the state chooses. This is not a willy-nilly, let's grab a book off the shelf and decide we're gonna use it as curriculum. This is a very long process that, you know, when the state chooses what it approves of, then we choose from that. This is not something that the district just pulls out of our ear and says, this is what we're gonna use. Because so often people come and say, well, is this all, is this all in line with, you know, whatever question they might have? And, and so we can assure them that absolutely it is, because we wouldn't use it if the state didn't approve of it. If it's not on the state's list, we're not gonna use it. So I just want to kind of make that clear to the public so that they, they really understand that. And, and also wanted to, this is an every-three-year process for each subject area, is that right?
The adoption cycles are five years?
Five years, it's every five years, pardon me, every five years. So when people ask us, well, why are you switching curriculums again, it's, it's, that's the way the state runs things as well. So just wanted to put that out there.
You're correct. And, you know, sometimes when they say the district selected this material, as you can see from this process, this is a very collaborative process, and it's really driven by our teachers. So Tiffany and Erin and the team will bring our teachers in who teach these subjects, and they do the review of the materials, and ultimately that committee, which also includes members of the community, makes a recommendation to the board. So it's a, it's a collaborative community process that's really driven by our teachers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm proud of our process. It also gives our curriculum department a chance to see, okay, we select materials, what is potentially missing or incomplete from something that our team can then provide teachers and students so that we can ensure the state's standards are met.
When we, when we select the materials and you say it's ranked by the state, and I think I asked this before when we were doing another topic of curriculum, if the one that we ranked first isn't on the, the education department's list, then we have to go with what they actually chose. So that's kind of piggybacking on what Ms. Felton is saying. So if it's not there, we can't use it. If we ranked it number one, because our community likes it, our teachers like it, we can't use it unless it is listed with the DOE, right? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that-
And I'll share in a moment, there has been some timeline changes from the state of Florida that actually can address that issue as well.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Because I know that was a issue before. We kept having to wait to see, okay, is it gonna, we haven't released it yet, they haven't released it yet, and then we were going to have to go backwards.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this slide shows the proposed adoption process timeline for our Spanish and French adoption. There are some dates that I want you to take note of. One of them would be November 10th, where we will present the adoption plan for the board's approval. November 12th through the 20th is when committee members for the adoption will be selected. Beginning December 1st, there will be access to the materials that are under consideration available to district staff and to the public via the school district website. December 10th will be our materials preview night, which will be held at the Professional Support Center, and committee recommendations will be presented to the board at the February Board Meeting. So next month, we will select our instructional materials adoption committee. The committee, as Mrs. Spradling mentioned, is comprised of teachers, school-based administrators, instructional specialists, parents, and community members. The application will be available to interested community members beginning November 12th and closing on November 20th. The application will be available on the district website. All committee members will be trained on the adoption processes and procedures on December 9th.
Quick question on that as well. Do you reach out to the members that served on this committee for adoption last go-around or not? I'm just curious, you know, because I didn't know if that was-
I think that is definitely an idea we could consider, because sometimes we do have the same committee members that enjoy doing that process.
Right, exactly. And I, I'm sure they don't keep up with all that we do with their busy lives, so it might be one of those-
Sure.
Be nice to have them back. They're already familiar with the process, so I think that would be a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A vital component of the adoption process is community engagement and input. We welcome community members, as mentioned, to apply to serve as a committee member or to review the available instructional materials options at our preview night on December 10th. Additionally, the public can provide feedback to the committee at any time during the instructional materials review process.
Kind of revisiting what members Spray and Felton said, the state has adjusted the timeline a bit. So the 2025-2026 DOE state adoption list for world languages and then other courses that are in the cycle is due to be released in December 2025, rather than the spring. So this will allow us, then, to select from not just the short bid list, but also the state adoption list, which will be excellent. And then from '26-'27 onward, those lists are actually due at the end of July, prior to the school year beginning. So in theory, right, we will be able to go into the adoption cycle completely already knowing what is state-approved.
Very nice.
Okay. So we want to thank you for your time, and I would like to invite any additional questions that you may have related to our instructional materials adoption process or this year's proposed adoption.
Quick question, so I saw French and Spanish. We do teach, do we teach any other languages?
At this time, no, we do not.
Okay, did we have Chinese at one time for a little while there?
And German, I think.
We used to have German at Southeast.
American Sign Language.
Yes.
And then Mr. Boone retired from, German went with him.
And I can share that on the short bid list this year are Spanish, French, Latin, and American Sign Language. So those other languages are not on, up for adoption on the state cycle this year.
Okay. When you said up, up for bid, meaning the state is putting them up for bid?
So the, those are publishers that have submitted into the short bid list are for those four subjects, excuse me, those four languages.
And the short bid list is something they submit to the state?
Yes, yes. The state does their own publisher course call prior to the adoption cycle beginning. And that's on the DOE website.
I, I went to the literacy summit over the weekend, you know?
It was excellent.
And, yeah, it was good. And so I was sitting in this one, one of the sessions, and there was a guy there talking about literacy for younger students, and he started talking about Greek and Latin and, and how a lot of our words, if you know what a suffix means and then you know what a prefix means, you can figure out what the word means and even help you pronounce it. And I know that those are what we call dead languages to some degree, but it'd be interesting to see them get back into our schools, at least as an option, you know, at least for people to take. Like, I was doing some reading for a course the other day I'm taking, and I came across the word called a word analogical. It was like, sounds kind of like analogy, so I go to the dictionary, actually looked up the etymology of the word, so apparently ana in Greek means according to, and then the, the last part of that word, analogie, comes from the Greek word logos. And so an analogy is something that's according to logic. And I thought, that makes sense, right? But if I had had a little bit of Greek or a little bit of Latin, I could figure that out.
Right.
You know, and so there is something to be said for helping our students read, actually, by having these languages available to them so that they can get, see these words and understand what they mean, would help their literacy. Anyway, that was just a little rabbit trail I went down, and I'll pull myself out of that hole and we can go on with the meeting. Anyway, that's it.
You know I'm a math person, but I know that morphology is part of our English standards as well.
Yeah, morphology, that's the term. That's all I have.
Anybody else? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll see you later in the process.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks.
All right, that brings us to item number 11 on the agenda, which is consent items. So Superintendent Breslin?
Yes, sir, thank you. The superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda for the October 28, 2025 school board meeting.
We have a motion for the consent?
I'll, I move.
Okay.
Something wrong?
I'll second. All right. I know Granicus was frozen, I'm in.
I'm back, I'm back in, too.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for our consent items. So let's go ahead and vote on those.
Is the second not going through?
The second.
The second did go through.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Laura.
But those screens aren't working, so. I think it passes 5 to 0. The screens aren't working, so I think it passes 5 to 0.
I'm stuck, yeah.
Yes, frozen this. We need to see.
I vote yes. For the record, my hand is up and I'm saying yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna re-
All right, consent item passed 5 to 0. Okay. All right, moving on to new business, non-consent items. 14.1, Superintendent Breslin.
The superintendent recommends approval of certificate resolution number 2025-010, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series 2026A. Capital funds.
I'm gonna test my system out here, and so moved, there we go.
I see the motion.
I'll second.
Yep, I'm back.
All right, Dr. Breslin, do you want to shoot this over to Ms. Sellers?
Yes, Mrs. Sellers is prepared to answer the next list here. We have about four items.
This is for the financing for the construction of high school AAA, and also for Moody Elementary, and for the Lake Manatee addition. And so here with me, also today, we have our bond counsel, Ritesh Patel, and the senior underwriter, Tom Kai with Bank of America, and they will be, and also have assisted with and will be as we go and make this issuance.
Okay.
And it's 235,000.
I know we've, we've done some workshop items, we've talked about this several, several times, but thank you for explaining that for the public. Board, I don't see anyone let up to speak on this topic, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the certificate resolution number 2025-010, which is authorizing the issuance of the certificates of participation, series 2026A. And that passes 5 to 0. Item 14.2, Superintendent Breslin?
The superintendent recommends approval of certificate resolution number 2025-012, authorizing issuance of refunding certificates of participation, series 2026B. Capital funds.
So moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Sellers?
And again, this item is the refunding for the certificates of participation of 2016. This refunding, basically refinancing, will save the district about $900,000.
Awesome, thank you. No board members are let up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of this certificate resolution, which is authorizing the issuance of refunding the COPS series 2026B.
I don't have anything to vote on. I vote yes, but I don't have a, an option. Could be operator error, but I don't have any-
He voted yes, and that passes 5 to 0. Item 14.3, Superintendent?
Thank you. The superintendent recommends approval of resolution number 2025-014, authorizing the series 2026 Amendment to Master Lease Purchase Agreement.
So moved.
I'll second. I just want to say that as we're dialing down through these, that the public, that we've workshopped this and we've gone through-
Oh, yeah.
-every bit of this with briefing as well.
Correct.
A lot.
Ms. Sellers?
And this would be related to the properties directly as part of that series 2026A and B.
All right, we have our motion, we have our second. I don't see any board members let up to speak on the approval of this resolution, so let's go ahead and vote on approval of this item. Here, yes?
I still can't, I'll log out.
Ms. Sellers, a yes? And that passes 5 to 0. Item 14.4, Superintendent Breslin?
The superintendent recommends approval of the budget amendments for July and August 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Ms. Sellers?
My turn again. This is for the month of July and August, the budget amendments, there were six chart strings that were over a million. Two of those top chart strings were in the general fund, they were related to the voted millage. Three of the chart strings were related to the capital fund, two of those related to the local capital improvement related to property insurance, and one was related to the sale tax proceed, which was loading the budget for the estimated sales tax distribution for the charter schools. And the last one was one in the special revenue, and this was loading Title II. a grant award that was received from the state.
Thank you. Ms. Tatum, do you let up to speak?
Yeah, I just have a question. So, Ms. Sellers, what schools are we using these funds for, again, please?
So, you mean for the, for the budget amendments, or for the?
The COPS that are coming up.
For the COPS, okay. So, the 2026-A was for the new high school AAA, Moody Elementary, and for the Lake Manatee addition.
Okay. You know, we've been talking about this, I just wanted to make the point to the board that, again, I did the calculations here, just went to a mortgage calculator. $386 million is the COPS that we have out for the new schools that we're building. We're gonna, at about a 4.2% interest rate, it's $105, $85 million for a grand total of over half a billion dollars, $571 million. So, that's why we've come together as a legislative interest item instead, you know? Hopefully, we can get some movement to help us bring down the cost of building these schools and free up some other money to do some of the other things maybe that we've heard about tonight. So, just wanted to reinforce that point that, you know, I'm voting for these things because we've put the contracts out there, and we have bills we have to pay, and we have to do our financial responsibility. But when you start looking at numbers over, like, over half a billion dollars for two schools, and somehow, somewhere, that just needs to change. That's not over the long-term financially sustainable. But that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and, I don't see any board members lit up to speak. So, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the Budget Amendments for July and August of 2025. And that passes five to zero. Item number 14.5, Superintendent Breslin?
Yes, sir, thank you. The superintendent recommends approval to renew purchase of stop-loss insurance, SDMC Number 23-0095-RG, not to exceed $690,145 for the 2026 calendar year.
So moved.
I'll second.
And we're gonna go to Ms. Sellers for?
Sure, this was an item that the Health Insurance Committee had approved and recommended for board approval. This does happen each year. It will, of course, begin for the calendar year, January 1st, and go through the rest of the calendar year.
And provides protection against any type of large catastrophic healthcare claim.
Thank you. All right, seeing no board members lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the approval to renew the purchase of stop-loss insurance. And that passes five to zero. Item number 14.6, Superintendent Breslin?
Thank you. The superintendent recommends approval of the ratification of the Manatee Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the School District of Manatee County.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Breslin, do you want to speak on this?
Yes, so, working in conjunction with the MEA and our district team through negotiations, we were able to come to an agreement. Very excited about that agreement. I believe Ms. Barber is in the room, I just can't currently see her.
She's around the corner.
But this will help us as we tied it to our strategic plan to really secure our future and make sure that we have quality pay and benefits for our staff. And so, we thank you for MEA, and I thank the negotiation team, and Mrs. Sellers' team, and our HR team. It's a lot of people at the table to make this happen, but we were able, we were able to get there.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to everybody who worked on it, the whole team. I know it's gonna be some long hours and some extra days and things like that, so thank you all very much. Let's go ahead and, we had a motion, we had a second. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the ratification of the MEA Collective Bargaining Agreement with the School District, Manatee County.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a quick question.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm voting yes. But Superintendent Breslin, when, obviously, that pay increase is retroactive to July 1st?
Yes.
That's behind us. So, for employees that are listening, or will hear this later, on which paycheck can they expect?
Absolutely. So, the next item that we'll get to will be the specific salary schedules, and those are prepared to go out per board approval, once the board approves, on November 14th, for all employees. And that will include, as you mentioned, retroactive pay to the start of the year, July 1st.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. ASME is still under negotiation, so all employees are listed other than the ASME bargaining group. And hopefully, we'll have a resolution to that soon.
All right, and that item passed five to zero, correct? Thank you. All right, 14.7, Superintendent Breslin?
The superintendent recommends approval of the 2025-2026 Salary Schedules for Teacher Performance Hiring Salary Schedule, PARA, and MEA Salary Supplement Schedule, Grandfather Teacher Salary Schedule, Hourly Non-Bargaining, SAM, School Administrator.
So moved.
I'll second.
Dr. Breslin, you want to address what this is, I mean, you kind of just did with Mr. Kennedy, but you can address it further.
Absolutely. So, as I mentioned, November 14th will be the pay once approved, and it will be retro, so we're excited about that. You can see the combined effect is that we are increasing funds for staff to retain and support and recruit at $14,700,490, which we believe will go a long way to keep us competitive with our surrounding districts, so we have the best employees here in Manatee County.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Tatum?
Do we have a motion?
Uh, we, yeah, we had a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate my point, I think I've made this before in a meeting or maybe a workshop, that I would be very much adamantly opposed, when we do the rezoning, since we're talking about administrator pay, to, like, if we took students from a high school and put them in another school, then that dropped the number of students at a particular school. Sometimes our, here, some of our pay scales are based on the number of students at school, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see any administrators lose salary or benefits because their school got smaller on a non-voluntary basis. Now, if a principal chooses to go from high school and middle school, it's a voluntary change or something like that, that's fine. But I just don't want to see our zoning, our rezoning plan cause any administrators to lose their pay and benefits, so that we can retain them, you know, as you were just talking about. So, that's Rich Tatum's opinion as one board member on that. But I just wanted to throw that out there again, that I would make a point of that if I saw that come down the road, so that's all. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
All right, seeing no one else lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on item 14.7, the Approval of 25-26 Salary Schedules for Teacher Performance Hiring Salary Schedule, PARA, MEA, Salary Supplement, etc. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Item 14.8, Superintendent?
Yes, sir. The superintendent recommends approval of the 2025-2026 Classroom Teacher and Other Instructional Personnel Salary Increase Allocation Plan.
So moved.
I'll second.
Dr. Breslin, you want to explain this particular item?
Absolutely. So, this is pursuant to Section 1011.621. Each district must submit a plan approved by the board to the DOE on the distribution of the Classroom Teacher and Other Instructional Personnel Salary Increase Allocation. So, acronym TSIA. We need to submit this to the Florida Department of Education, noting how that we were able to distribute monies set aside for pay increases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on item number 14.8. And that passes five to zero. Item 14.9, Superintendent?
Yes, sir. The superintendent recommends approval of the Parish Classical Preparatory Academy Contract for the 2025-2032 School Years.
So moved.
Second.
If you want to explain this one?
Yes.
Dr. Breslin?
So, the contract starts, once approved, in 2025. The school is slated to open in 2027 as a K7 Opportunity for Students. Through the next five years after 2027, they will roll up grade levels to a K12 option, centered on state standards, but centered around a classical approach to those state standards. The school is set to be located, as it says in the title, in the parish community.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no board members lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of 14.9, Parish Classical Preparatory Academy. And that passes five to zero. Item 14.10, Superintendent Breslin?
The superintendent recommends approval to publish drafts, draft of redistricting maps to district website following the October 31, 2025 workshop.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. And if you want to explain, I know we're kind of putting a future date.
Yes.
Friday.
Yes, we wanted the board to have a, you know, vote on approval for us to publish publicly the map after discussion on the workshop during Friday's workshop, October 31. So, by Monday, we will publish the maps that we see the board leaning towards for elementary, middle, and high for public review and feedback through November. We will also, during the workshop, talk specifically about ways the public can offer feedback, from online links to public meetings. We hope to have our final maps prepared at the end of November, and then brought forth for final board approval in December, once we set the December board date. And of course, this is a process that started in the spring, and we will have on our website and at the workshop, all the meetings that we've had throughout the year, and the upcoming meetings as well, so that all families and future residents of Manatee County can see exactly what we're looking at in terms of rezoning.
Thank you very much.
And just have a quick question. Did you just say, once they're approved, then they'll have, the community will have the opportunity to see the maps on our website? Will there be community input meetings again, like we did? Okay, I want to make sure that we're doing that again, because I've been asked about that, and I say, I'm pretty sure that's the process we talked about.
Absolutely. We will publish our community meetings that will take place in November before the fall break.
Have we decided what schools will be the host of those community meetings yet?
Yes, we have. We have Lakewood, Parish, and Braden River.
Okay.
It's, we all, we have a virtual link. And then, those dates, I don't have them off the top of my head, but they're, okay. They start the week of November 13.
Okay.
Right.
Great.
Mr. Clark has those readily available. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we bumped it back. It'll be the 17th.
Okay.
The 18th, and the 20th.
Okay.
All right, will be those dates, and we have the locations. And then, as she said, we'll have this all posted on the website. Folks will be, parents will be able to go in and go through, let's talk, leave comments, and we'll be communicating back with them through that means.
So, you said Lakewood?
Yes, ma'am. Braden River High School, Lakewood Ranch, and Parish.
And Parish, they're all on the east side. Is there any on the west side?
No, ma'am, we did not add one.
Like Bay Shore or something? Okay.
We could, we could add on the west side. We found in the spring, there wasn't attendance.
Okay.
But that isn't, that's not to say we can't add something if need be. And during the workshop, you know, that can be the discussion, that there's a need to add, and then we could add that. We won't officially publicize and blast out these dates to our families until after the workshop.
Right.
So that we can hear from board members on the direction, do those dates function? Are we in the right location? And then, we'll publish the dates publicly for our families.
Yes, ma'am, this will be a minimum, and of course, we'll be watching to see those comments come in. And if we see hot areas, then we'll.
Add another option?
Yes, ma'am, we can add if needed.
Perfect, that's where I was going. That's where I was going.
So, we'll watch that. We'll see where the concerns are and address those accordingly.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Tatum?
I would just like to potentially attend those meetings, so if we could, Ms. Cox can make sure those get on our, on our schedules with invitations, that was my point.
Yes, sir, absolutely. After the workshop, once we have the dates firmly set, we'll get them on your calendars.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, no other board members are lit up to comment. Obviously, we'll probably all be commenting pretty heavily come Friday. And so, we're gonna vote on the approval to publish the draft of redistricting maps to the website following the October 31, 2025 workshop, where we discuss those state maps. We can go ahead and vote on that item? And it passes five to zero.
Okay.
We're about an hour, almost an hour and a half in. I want to, I'm gonna go ahead and call a break now, be, or recess, because we gotta go into the leasing corporation. So, I'm gonna go ahead and put this normal meeting into recess until 7 o'clock.
Perfect.
All right, I am officially calling to order the meeting of the Manatee Leasing Corporation. We have four items of new business that I'm looking for a motion and a second on. First one is the approval of the corporate resolution number 2025-011, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, other known as COPS, Series 2026A. Do I have a motion and a second for that?
So moved, okay.
Second. Motion and a second altogether, I love it. Efficiency. Let's go ahead and, seeing no, nobody lit up to speak, either one.
I got it.
This item is the, I guess the sister part?
Yeah.
Item 14.1?
Yep, yep, I mean, we're good, we're good. Yeah, hopefully the public knows, board knows, everybody sees it, it's the same item. Removing to a leasing corporation, because we officially can do this. Money stuff.
Money stuff.
Just a bit.
What's your, what's your day job?
Just a small money. All right, here we go, let's vote on 16.1. And that passes five to zero, thank you. All right, board, I'm looking for approval, a motion and a second on the approval of corporate resolution number 2025-013, authorizing issuance of refunding the COPS, Series 2026B, as stated in the meeting, do I have a motion and a second for that?
I'll second.
There's a motion and our second, and again, this was to refund the 2016 bonds, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval 16.2. And that passes five to zero. Item number three is the approval of corporate resolution number 2025-015, authorizing the Series 2026 Amendment to Master Lease Purchase Agreement. Looking for a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
A second.
So we got our motion and our second. Again, these are attached to the COPS that we were doing for 2026A series, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval, the amendment to the master lease agreement. And that passes five to zero. Last item here for the Manatee Leasing Corporation is the approval of Second Amendment to Lease Schedule Number 2023A and partial release relating to the school board certificate of COPS, Series 2023A.
So moved.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Seeing no board members lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on this approval of the Second Amendment to Lease Schedule. Passes five to zero. Thank you very much, board, we are going to adjourn this meeting of the Manatee Leasing Corporation. And then I'm going to reopen the October 28, 2025 regular school board meeting. And move on to new business. With no superintendent recommendation, item number 18 is the approval, so looking for motion and a, and a second, approval of travel expenses associated with the school board members, the superintendent's attendance at the FSBA FAD's annual joint conference, December 2nd to the 5th of this year, 2025, at the Grand Hyatt Tampa Bay, Florida, not to exceed 8,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor, anybody lit up to speak on this item? Nope, don't see any.
I always look forward to this one.
Yep, annual conference we go to every year, same place, same time. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the travel expense for us and the superintendent to FSBA and FADs. And that passes five to zero. Item number 19, just information only, just some charter school financials and our financial statements are in there. Jumping to item 21, which is our updates from our deputies, let's start with instruction. I know you already had a little section today, but give us some more.
Yeah, we're, we're rolling in the instructional division here, our schools are working, working hard. So board members, Superintendent Breslin, we do have a lot going on, we'll start with arts. Music expos begin next month, we'll have elementary and middle school students visiting our high school campuses for performances throughout the month, starting the week of the 10th. So, you know, our high schools like Manatee will host all the elementary schools, middle schools in that area, we'll have performances, kids will get a chance to see the schools they feed into and really kind of see how their future connects in Manatee County and get a chance to experience the arts as well, so I'm really excited about those programs. In STEM, Saturday, November 8th is our first STEM competition of the school year, it's the catapult competition. Students work in groups, they build catapults with miscellaneous materials and teams, and then they're judged on their distance and their accuracy. And so that day, teams will build from around 8:45 to 10:15, then they'll compete from 10:30 to noon, and then from noon to 1:00, we'll have awards, it should be a wonderful Saturday of STEM learning. And then in athletics, we have the Braden River High School volleyball team in the regional final tomorrow, they'll be playing at home at 7:00 PM. And if they win, they'll be in the final four, so go Pirates.
Oh wow.
We also have a lot of important required instruction topics in November, including Holocaust Education Week from the 3rd to the 7th. We have Victims of Communism Day, November 7th, and we have Veterans Day, November 11th. And as you know, our schools are very involved in celebrating our veterans and those who served. Our high school bands participate in our different community Veterans Day parades, we have Parish at the Parish Vets Parade, Lakewood Ranch at Anna Maria, Manatee's actually being in DC for the National Veterans Day Parade. We'll have Southeast at Anna Maria, Palmetto with the Palmetto Parade, Braden River in Palmetto as well. And then all of our JROTC programs will be participating in different parades and festivities that day as well, so it's, it's gonna be really exciting. And as you know, many of our schools also host Veterans Day events during the school week that week and before, including Braden River Middle School on November 7th. So we'll have a lot going on this, that first couple weeks in November to celebrate these important events. We also, as you know, have our seniors that are going to USF Sarasota, Manatee, each school kind of has a trip planned on each Friday and they get to go to the campus, they get to experience the amazing learning environments at USF Sarasota, Manatee. And we're just really excited to see our students getting to experience everything that college has to offer our seniors as they go to USF. I appreciate seeing so many of you at our early learning symposium at Palmetto High School on Saturday, we had really a conference promoting early literacy, from pre-K all the way to 3, we had more than 130 teachers who took a Saturday out of their busy lives to spend all day learning, we had a great keynote speaker, great breakout sessions, and it was just a really well-attended, wonderful event. So I want to thank our teachers, our literacy coaches, our administrators, thank Palmetto High School for hosting us that day, and of course, thanks to Allison Nichols, Vanessa Marasco, and our whole elementary curriculum team for putting on a really fabulous event on an important district initiative. Going into career and technical education, we have students from FCC LA and TSA students attend their fall leadership conferences. Next week, students from Braden River, Parish, and Nolan will attend the FFA National Convention, and two students from Parish will be competing in the National FFA Science Fair as well. At MTC, we have high school tours getting ready to start on both campuses. We had a great advisory breakfast with, you know, all of our different program advisory groups there, more than 300 in attendance supporting our programs at MTC. Enrollment is currently open for spring semester and filling up rapidly. And, you know, as you know, we have incredible programs at MTC, and one of the really neat events they do every year that's not open to the public, but obviously open to board members, is there's a school-wide mass casualty scenario day, because you know, we have all of our first responder programs there on the east campus, and they enact a mass casualty scenario and really use their training in conjunction with one another to, to respond to a major, you know, simulated campus incident. And that'll be taking place on November 13th. And then of course, we have over 140 students signed up for Fall National Technical Honor Society, and that ceremony will be on November 19th for those students at MTC. And then finally, November 3rd through 7th is recognized by the Florida Department of Education as Gifted Education Week, a time for schools to recognize and celebrate Florida's continued commitment to provide rigorous education for gifted students in every district across the state. And National School Psychology Week is the first full week of November, so as you are in our schools, say thank you to our school psychologists who, who, you know, work diligently with students and provide important services to our schools, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good stuff.
All right, moving on to operations update, Ms. Clark?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Superintendent Breslin? So just giving update with recruiting around our job fairs, we had a job, operations job fair on October 16th, about 65 folks were in attendance, we were able to hire, extend 10 offers, ended up having seven people that were interested in becoming a bus driver, so we, as you know, we have a pool for that, and that's going really well. The October 21st teacher and para job fair has been rescheduled to November 18th. We have a couple upcoming events that we'll have a presence at in the recruiting office, that's Florida Gulf Coast has a teacher career fair on October 29th, we have another operational job fair on November 13th, we are gonna add, we're looking for RNs and LPNs to that job fair, so we're pushing that out right now, and then as I said, we have a teacher, para virtual fair, November 18th. There are a number of upcoming community events that we'll have a presence at from the recruiting office, we have the Manatee Sheriff's Spooktacular We have the Manatee Sheriff's Spooktacular Night, so I'm excited about that. I'm sure you are too. Parish Fall Festival coming up. We got a high school career fairs where we'll have a, we'll, we'll have a presence. Uh, and the Chamber of Conference, Commerce has a fall expo that will have a presence there as well. In the area of benefits, wanna thank you all that attended the, uh, the health fair, employee health fair that was held on October thirteenth. We had about a hundred and ten, uh, people that, um, participated. I wanna thank those that attended and the ones who made the event happen. It is benefits, open, open enrollment starts tomorrow. So, uh, it's a, a passive open enrollment, which runs from October twenty-ninth through November seventh. With any changes that are made, they take effect January one, twenty twenty-six, but it is passive. Passive means your current benefits elections that you have automatically roll over unless you do something, you'd make an, take an action, right? The only thing that doesn't roll over that you need to do each year is if you're, uh, participating in the flexible spending. So if that's something you're doing, you'll need to make sure you update that. Health insurance premiums are set to increase by four percent. Legal insurance will increase by twelve percent. Those are the only changes in those regards. Everything else stays the same as it was last year. All right, so we encourage all employees to review all the benefits and then look for their confirmation letters that have happened, come out mid-November. So make sure you're watching that. Food and nutrition, nutrition service is held in, uh, in-service training on October thirteenth. It was held at Southeast. We had all of our cafeteria managers and food service workers. The training included knife skills, serving tips, and innovative ideas were shared. Uh, we had a gentleman from, um, Leaders Uplifted, Jason Martinez, that did, um, uh, uh, was a keynote speaker. And we had a mini food show. Uh, we had representatives from Kellogg's, Tyson, and Smuckers. Transportation, we had our, uh, school, uh, bus safety week last week. Uh, really went well. Um, they had daily trivia questions. There was a mini road E O, uh, optical course for drivers. Uh, they gave out medals, trophies, um, and we had a luncheon for our, um, bus transportation department. Um, you know, had a lot of fun with it, but the emphasis, as you know, is all on student safety. And, but also we, I want our, everyone to know, we take it seriously as well, as you heard earlier, early in the presentation. Uh, we have one driver that passed their CDL test, and we got a number of them that we're working through, uh, to become bus drivers. So we're excited about that. Superintendent mentioned the rezoning, uh, so we, we'll have our workshop on Friday, and, uh, we'll get that out to the, to, uh, on the website. Just wanted to say thank you. Uh, there are two items, I think we heard in comments, that were, uh, in the consent items. Uh, one was nineteen remediation services. That's kinda tied into, uh, what they were speaking to. But that speaks to anytime we have, say, a water leak in a building, uh, overnight or what have you, that we have to go in and address. We can work with companies like ServPro to come in and, and remediate immediately. So it's, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but obviously if we bump up against that, that number, we'll come back to you and ask you for more money. But we looked at what we spent last year, made an adjustment, and that's what we think we're gonna try to hold to this year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then number twenty-seven was a, uh, an AE contract, uh, for four hundred and fifty-one thousand. And that speaks to the water lines at Lakewood Ranch. We've had a number of, uh, water line breaks over the last year. Uh, even in my last role, I knew, uh, so, uh, we're gonna, gonna tackle that now with replacing all the water lines on campus. Uh, as I said, this contract is four hundred and fifty-one. The project budget is about six million dollars to do. That'll be coming to you here in the next month or so, coming months to, for asking for your approval around that to address some of those issues we've had at Lakewood Ranch. Um, you know, we take it seriously. This is important to us. Uh, staff has been out there. I've been out there myself a number of times, walking the campus, uh, identifying issues. I know Mr. Tatum had asked me to look at it maybe a month ago. That was probably about two months ago. Went out and walked with, brought our, uh, Director of Construction and our Director of Maintenance, and we walked the campus and noticed some things that we wanted to take care of. So you'll start to see some of those items come before you. Uh, but, uh, wanna thank you for your support. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Tatum.
Oh, and then.
But real quick, uh, Mr. Clark, uh, one of the, um, on this topic, one of the things through the superintendent. One of the comments that was made, um, and I remember hearing this when I was working, um, as a teacher, is that the A C gets turned off, completely turned off over the weekend?
For part of the time. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Could you, cause I mean, th- that's a powerful public comment, cause it does seem like that would be a problem if there's no A C running for even parts of the weekend, that would.
It doesn't get cut off for the whole weekend.
No, no.
You don't run it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask her, like, what's the.
Right, right, right.
Run it for the same hours that we do during the week when we have students and staff and thousands of people in our buildings. But it, it runs on the weekends, um, and you can speak specifically to.
Sure, sure. So it runs cycles on and off through the weekend. Um, we monitor it. Obviously, if we have an issue that's developing, we can extend that time period, and I got staff looking at that. In the case of Lakewood Ranch, they have a, a, um, a church that rents the building on Sundays. So it's running all day Sunday, right, and a portion of the day Saturday. But we most definitely monitor that and those things and make adjustments as needed. So, uh, sometimes what you find is, uh, even when I was a principal with Palmetto High, uh, or W D SUG, uh, old buck W D SUG building. It, uh, you know, things may happen over the weekend, lightning strike, power's out all weekend. Maybe we don't catch word of it until late. We can't get someone out to fix it. That's where you'll see dampness throughout the campus or, or all our buildings. But most times, that's not the case. There are isolated incidents that happen. We, the team goes in, does an assessment, and makes adjustments as needed.
Okay, well, um, Mr. Sheriff, I may, kind of, Dr. Breslin, if you could kind of keep the board updated on.
Absolutely.
What we're finding progress.
Sure.
As we done.
We'll do.
Ms. Fink, back to, back to our classroom, back to our students.
Yes.
Thank you.
Tatum?
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Kennedy said, I mean, I'm all about saving money with utilities and being as efficient as we can. However, if it, if it comes down to, look, we've tried other remediation efforts, and the fix for this is leave the air conditioning on. Then, and then we have to pay a million dollars more a year in utilities to not have teachers looking up and whatever. You know, I'm not an expert in this area. I hate to use that term, but I'm not. I'm gonna have to count on you guys. But if, you know, if the issue is, well, the best thing to do is keep the air on, but gee, that's a million more dollars a year in utility bills. I'm not. I wouldn't be opposed to that, right? Just to keep the campuses looking nice and keep the mold out of the. And it could be that simple. I, I think you and I had this conversation somehow the other day is on my lanai back behind my house. When I bought it, there was mold growing on the drywall, which I don't know why we build houses with drywall on the outside. But this one was, right? The ceiling of my lanai has, anyway, there was this green mold growing there. And so I had a guy come out and fix the fan or something, and he goes, you know, if you'll just leave your fan on, that air will circulate and the mold will go away. And sure enough, they've been running ever since, and there's no mold there. So whatever it takes, uh, that's basically, to me, I mean, not a hundred million dollars, but you know, whatever it takes within a reasonable amount of money to not have these problems is where I would fall if you guys came to us and said, this is what we need to do.
Appreciate that. Superintendent had, asked me to look into that and look at expanding that already. So we're, that's in, in the works. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent? I'm sorry, excuse me. Jumped, jumped legal.
I'll be quick. Um, just two quick updates, uh, on future school sites that you know about. So the district closed and now owns the Taylor Ranch property, which is the one that's out east, uh, kinda near the DeSoto Speedway area. Um, it's just future acquisition.
Right.
And, uh, and then the Jones Farm, uh, if you recall, uh, the discussion on that, Mr. Neal came in, that the board indicated, uh, looking into buying a larger piece of property from Jones. And, uh, so that, that contract's been amended to extend the closing date. And then the, that timeframe, uh, we're, we're working on putting together an, an amendment that will add basically double the size of that parcel from about forty acres to approximately ninety acres.
Awesome.
And it's, uh, the discussions have gone really well. Uh, Mr. Jones very agreeable to it. And, uh, so we'll be bringing that back to the board in the form of an amendment probably in the next thirty days. I think that's all the pending, uh, future schools we got going on right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, now Superintendent remarks.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Penley doesn't have anything? I'm just.
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just picking on you.
I do wanna point out that it is Mr. Penley's birthday on Friday.
Oh.
Oh.
Happy birthday. We'll have a workshop. Will you join us?
Yeah.
Uh, so I went first, um, to thank, um, those that came up and gave the, the comments, um, and to the team, uh, Mr. Clark and his team. Um, as soon as the, um, an email was received, um, they're very responsive and working with Mr. Dahlclass, um, and making sure that all our classrooms are safe for learning. And so I really appreciate that, the hours the team has put in, um, to address any concerns that come forward. Um, and Board, I wanna thank you. Um, you approved our quarter one school safety requirements as part of consent. Um, and I just thank you, um, for that, and thank you to our safety teams, um, Mr. D'Amico, uh, Mr. Bartholomew, uh, Mr. Cronus, that keep our schools running safe. Um, and we have a very good, um, tight system, um, to ensure that we're monitoring all of our schools and, and keeping the campuses safe. I did attend the literacy summit this Saturday at Palmetto High School, as Mr. Jensen spoke about. Um, it was excellent and well-attended. Um, the SOAR lab had an open house last night. I was able to attend that as well, and just really applaud our staff and our schools, um, for keeping our focus on literacy, which is our primary, uh, focus, of course. Um, and they really are staying on the edge of innovation for advancing literacy in our community. Um, I wanna thank USF, who hosted us today. Um, they were showing off their collaboratory space, um, which is a new learning space that they have here on their campus, uh, in Manatee, Sarasota. Um, the learning lab is open for student programming. Um, of course, there are opportunities, as Mr. Jensen mentioned, um, that we'll be able to bring our students to during the school day. But they're also open for camps, and in fact, already have camps listed for summer of twenty twenty-six. Uh, if you're a parent as myself, I know that you are looking already for summer programming, and they are out there. Um, also to S C F, um, congratulations on their groundbreaking for their parish campus this week. Very excited for their expansion. Um, Board members, on the topic of operations, we met with Schneider Electric this week. Um, looking forward to bringing, uh, proposal to you in the near future, really examining our energy costs and our systems to be sure that we are, um, efficient in our energy costs, um, and maintaining our systems, um, as well. And you might have heard earlier, when we were talking about SAMASET and their attendance incentives, you might have heard the slogan, "Showing up matters." Um, the communications team in conjunction with our student services and our E Ds have done a great job in building an attendance campaign. You'll hear "Showing up matters" everywhere, and you'll see the logo coming soon. Um, but showing up matters for all of us, and so thank you, Board, for showing up for all the events that you are at. And thank you, parents, um, for encouraging your children to attend school, even when they're feeling a little tired, leaving up, leading up to the holidays. Um, and speaking of showing up, our principals, um, show up every day. Um, we're closing out Principal Appreciation Month, month, and we appreciate all that they do. Um, you also improved school improvement plans tonight. They'll be posted on the state portal. Um, but really strong plans submitted by each school led by our outstanding portables, portables principals. Thank you.
Portable principals.
Portables principals.
Um, thank you very much. Board comments. We're going Kennedy, Tatum, Felton, Spray, myself.
All right. I will also be brief. Uh, my, my normal shout-out to my board colleagues, to Dr. Breslin, the leadership team. Thanks, everybody, for another smooth meeting, and for everybody who got us ready to be here for this smooth meeting. Um, I just have two quick employee shout-outs. Um, at Community Day at Rogers Garden Bullock Elementary, um, I guess that was two weeks ago now. Um, I had the pleasure of, um, joining Dr. Breslin there, and, and, um, it was really just a great day for the, um, for the kids at Rogers. Um, it was like Wear Orange Day, and, which is usually the, the color of the Community Day or Unity Day. And, um, I went to Ms. Johnson's class after the, uh, school began, and, um, she was kind enough to let me stay in and, and do the activity with the students, and I got here, I got here tonight, and there was a beautiful card signed by all the kids and Ms. Johnson. So Ms. Johnson, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Jensen did mention, uh, School Psychologist Week, which is actually coming up next week. But I wanna thank Sarah Sanders for emailing the board to make us aware. And, um, just the la, I wanna do a shout-out for Tatiana, who was the last school psychologist that I worked with at Daughtry Elementary, and how much I respect the work that they do. Um, these school psychologists are dealing with some very tough stories, and they have to carry that weight around with them. Um, because for a lot of kids, you can't, they can't learn until you break through some of that, some of the, the things that they, um, they need to get off their chest, and they need help dealing with. So to all our school psychs, um, thank you all for that. And, um, as, uh, Sarah Sanders said in her email, please, when we're out of school, go find the school psych. And, um, like Derek said, they're, they're just dying to share what they do and show us around their schools. So, um, I'll make sure I, I take that to heart. So that's it. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Ms. Tatum?
Okay, since it, it isn't too, too late, I, I do have some comments that I wanted to make tonight in the sense of, you know, as elected officials, sometimes we need to be community leaders and kind of set the tone to some degree. So interesting safety point tonight. I don't know if any of you heard, but the president of S C F, uh, Tommy Gregory, also a fellow Air Force Academy graduate, a graduate, uh, just about passed away on the seventeenth of October. He had a heart attack.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And, but he did survive, and so the good Lord left him here. I guess he has some work to do. So that got me thinking. I lost my roommate from the Air Force Academy. He and I were roommates for three years. At the age of fifty-seven, dropped over from a heart attack. Uh, two of my best friends from the Air Force are dead. One of them died of a heart attack at the age of sixty. He was down in the Bahamas with his wife. They had bought a catamaran. They wanted to sail around the world. They were getting ready to do that and practicing, and, and then the other gentleman died of cancer. So why, why, like, that's interesting, Rich. What does that have to do with safety? Because some, some safety things happen like right now, in the sense of, hold my adult beverage and watch this. Usually know that something, that's like an immediate safety problem. But some of these problems are like these, where they just kind of start creeping up on you. And so in this area, I, I would encourage us to start looking at our exercise and our nutrition. Those of us up here and most of the people in the audience, except the young ones back there, but this is a good time to start. Yeah, you high school students is, and I'll give you a quick story. So my, my, my wife, uh, is into whole food, plant-based eating, although, you know, we have some fish once in a while, and I've been known to have a hot dog at the ballpark. She doesn't need to know that. She's, she's not real, she hasn't harassed me about that stuff. But the point is, is that we used to go to these meetups, and they're whole food, plant-based meetups. And so I remember this one story that is relevant to this. There was a gentleman there, and you know, you sit with these people, and you start talking about, why are you at the whole food, plant-based meetup? And he said, well, he said, I have fifteen stents in my heart. And he's like sixty-two years old. And he said, uh, the, my cardiologist told me that there's no more places to put stents in my heart. And he said, I had to do something. So he gets on the internet, and he looks up whole food, plant-based eating. And so he decides to kind of go onto that diet, very strict. And, and by the way, they're actually like whole food, plant-based meatballs, and if you put them enough tomato sauce on them, they.
They're delicious.
They're delicious, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, so, so, so he goes on that, and a year later, he goes back to his cardiologist for the annual checkup. And his cardiologist is like, well, what's going on with you? You, you, you know, your, your cardiovascular system is pretty much cleaned out. It's in much better shape. And he goes, I don't know. I've just been eating lots of bananas and nuts and stuff like that, you know? And probably some meatballs with a lot of sauce on them, but not really meat. So, so that's all great. That's good for him. So then he has a back problem, and he has to get, get an operation. And his, so the back surgeon says, look, because you have these cardiovascular problems, I want your cardiologist to sign off on your, on your surgery. And the cardiologist says, I'm not signing off on your surgery. I don't think your heart can handle this. He's like, well, look, I've cleaned it out. So anyway, this guy had to Google around the country, and he found a cardiologist that kind of believes in the whole food, plant-based eating thing. And so he went to him, and he signed off, and he was able to get his surgery. All that being said is, these are the type of things that creep up on us. It's not an immediate safety issue until it actually happens. Knock on wood for all of us. So I just would encourage us all to look at our nutrition and look at our exercise and, because we're. And because we're all getting to the age in this room, except for a couple of you. But if you start now, then maybe you don't have to worry about it where, you know, we kind of giggle a little bit. And I, but, you know, when, when I found out that Tommy, and this is a guy here, Tommy Gregory, like you've seen him, he's slim. Rides his bike, you know, miles and miles and miles. He actually broke his arm because he was riding his bike over the summer up in Massachusetts. But if it can happen to him, it can happen to any of us. So just, yeah. And I'm doing my part. I actually started doing 15-hour fasts to see if I could just, you know, work on my health a little bit. So anyway, I'm trying to walk the talk. Second thing is, Ms. Cox, if you'd put up the PowerPoint present or the slide that I want you to put up real quick, if you could. So this is actually interesting because tonight we were talking about the Rotary and all these volunteer efforts. And again, kind of trying to set the tone. So this is a picture of feeding empty little tummies. And so I'm walking, you know, I'm doing my thing. I deliver food for them, usually on a weekly basis if I can. But the last couple of weeks, this lady, and the yellow arrow is pointing to her. And if you can see, the lady behind her in the pink shirt, she's not pushing that lady. That lady in the wheelchair there is probably seven, she has to be over 70, probably closer to 75. And she's in a wheelchair. And what happens there is you walk around the table and you fill bags. There's little, you can see little stations. You grab something, you put it in the bag, you tie it up. And then it sits there. They load it in cars and you just keep going around until they pack like 1,500 bags. Anyway, I thought to myself, I thought, if I were like 73 and in a wheelchair, would I have the motivation to do whatever it takes to get myself ready, drive over to feeding empty little tummies? And you actually either have to go upstairs or this big ramp to get your wheelchair up there and go around that table 10 or 15 or maybe even 18 times every week. And I thought, no, I probably, I probably wouldn't. But if she can do it, you know, all of us can do something. I was listening to Mr. Edwards, that big, long list of stuff he's involved in. And I'm thinking, my little couple hours that I do a week, I do a week of felt is nothing compared to what he's doing. And so I would just encourage us all to find something. And we all have different constraints on our time. Some of us have kids and we have full-time jobs or, you know, not so full-time jobs. But, you know, maybe, maybe one less game of golf a month and we could do something. Or, you know, maybe in every weekend, we take the boat out. Well, maybe three weekends, we take the boat out. But the fourth weekend, we go clean up the local pond, which has a bunch of trash around it, you know? And just, Candide is one of the famous plays that Voltaire wrote within the area of French literature. And so that story is basically, is he's a young guy and he's kind of naive, thinks the world is beautiful, wonderful, and everything's good. And then he goes around the world and has a lot of misadventures. He comes back and the end of the story is, I think what I really should do is just take care of my own garden. And so this volunteering in our local community is how we take care of our own garden. And we just encourage all of us to find something where we can say, yep, I'm tending the garden. So, okay. So thanks for indulging me. I went to Lincoln Middle School today, took a visit around there. And I asked the principal, I said, what is the number one concern that you have? And he said, attendance. Right? And he says that there are, there are students there in middle school now where they leave for a week to go to a football tournament. And again, I would just like to encourage those of us in the community to understand that that's, that's not good. I mean, I guess I could come across as preachy, but our children's education has to come first before that kind of stuff. I could understand if you're going to IMG or something and you truly have an athlete that is high level and maybe is truly going to be an Olympic athlete or something like that, that's different. But, you know, to pull kids out of middle school for a week, especially in those schools where they really need to be there, I would just encourage anyone in the community, preachers, pastors, anyone who can influence that situation to help get those kids and keep them in school because it really does matter for their education. The Literacy Summit was great. And we already talked about that. Oh, and at Lincoln also, so, and I was shaking hands with people over there today. And the principal says, by the way, here's our school nurse. And we shook hands and she's, he said, by the way, she saved somebody's life. Like, she did? And I don't know that we've recognized her or not. I don't think we have. But I guess there was someone, I think, that had a heart attack out in the parking lot. She rushed out there, gave, did CPR, saved the person's life until medical attention could come and get her. So we might want to get her up here. And, you know, if we haven't done that yet. And I don't remember seeing that person. Has she been up here a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away?
I think he was.
Because she said she hasn't been to the school. Because I asked her, I said, have you been to the school board? And she said, no, I guess they had a, anyway, it'd be nice, if we haven't done it, to recognize her. And thank you for indulging me with my inspirational type comments. And since it wasn't too late, I figured I'd go ahead and do them. And that's all I have to say about that, thankfully, for everybody. So I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. So?
Okay. So usually I run down everywhere I've been for the last however many weeks since our last board meeting. But I have a couple of other things I want to address, so I'm just going to make that part short. So in the last month, I've visited 11 schools for formal visits, been to different events, student performances, lots of other things as well. I was also at the Literacy Summit, wonderful keynote speaker. I was at the open house at Sorinfor yesterday evening. That was great. And as usual, I'm running all over the place and Mr. Tatum and I see each other everywhere. But I wanted to, to touch on the Schools of Hope, which of course, we've had speakers mention today. I have been available to anybody who wants to talk to me and have been in several different media outlets in the last couple of weeks talking about this. I've been asked to come to a couple of other things in the next couple of weeks to talk about it as well, trying to get our community aware that this is something that they should pay attention to. When we were at the legislative delegation yesterday, I hung out to the very, very, very end and submitted the very last, second to last public comment and spoke to our delegation about this as a, as a board member. Not, of course, not for the board, but as a board member for my constituents, asking that if the legislature is not able or is not willing to change this law, could they at least give us a year's grace? They give us grace time for implementing lots of other things, curriculum changes, safety, the school start times, lots of things. And we have a month and a half from the time the rulemaking was set until we can start receiving letters. There were some nods and had, you know, so I don't know where that's going to go, but I did, you know, at least, you know, is this a possibility? And so I just brought that up. As you know, I am on the Florida School Board Association's Advocacy Committee. Schools of Hope and full-day pre-BPK funding are our two priorities for this year. So we are working on those and addressing them with everybody we possibly can. There is a community group in Sarasota and Manatee parents are getting involved with it as well. A community group of parents who are trying to address the Schools of Hope issue as well. I can help anybody get connected with them if they're interested in doing so. And so, yeah, this is, but this is obviously a concern for me and you all know because you've heard me wax on about it at the workshop last time. But I just want to make sure that the public does know that we are taking this seriously. But if you look at the law, it very clearly says the school district must. We don't, we can, we can, we can all say we don't like it, but we can't stop it. We need the community to talk to their legislators, to see what they can do to help bring this up because it's going to take your voices. We, we have no power here to vote on this and make it not happen. So I just want to make sure that I bring that to the public again. And I will continue to do so until people are tired of hearing from me. But this is something that I feel very strongly about. And so I encourage everyone to try and get involved. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Spray?
Okay. I want to say I thoroughly enjoyed the USF tour today. That is such a great little campus for our students who might feel intimidated by going to a huge campus like my granddaughter did in Tampa at USF. So that's just a great little gem that we have here. We have got a lot of gems, actually. And partnering with all of them is just going to benefit all of our students and our community. Because as we said, they're our future leaders. So partnering with people like USF and New College and all of them really, SCF, is just going to benefit all of us. I didn't get to go to the reading summit. I had planned to, had it on my calendar and something came up and I did not go. But I understand it was a great event. I did want to sit there, but I couldn't. Tours, my school tours are packing my calendar and I'm always excited to go to those. When you go to schools, I say you get euthanized, meaning that the youth just kind of gives you that energy, you know, that you need. And it gives you that encouragement to do what you do behind the scenes as a board member. It's just not sitting here and doing the vote on the items. It's the work behind the scenes that you do that really makes the biggest impact, I think. I was going to say something else about, oh, the Big Bang Theory is coming up. So, and it's actually got a, there's a meeting that day too. But I want everybody to remember the Big Bang Theory because that's next month. And if we get ahead of communicating about that, we'll get a lot of people. So I'm just looking at our communication director back there. I love that. It's just so much fun. The kids, they don't really understand the, how far a dollar can go until they don't have any money. And you got to tell them they got to get a second job, you know? It's, it's, I loved it. I just loved it. Football games. I've been going to some football games. I've been to Manatee. I've been to Braden River. Been to Palmetto. Actually, the night that Palmetto beat Manatee High with the rivalry trophy, I was there. And planning to go to Lakewood Ranch in southeast. I've been to two homecomings. That's the night they were there. They were having that. So it's a lot of fun. Looking forward to the practice of tennis season coming up in the spring. But yeah, always a lot going on. And I just want to thank all of the teachers, bus drivers, the aides, all of you that show up every day. You show up and you do your thing every day with our kids. So other than that, I'm going to be going to a Mixons event and going to look at a park. And I just think we do have a lot of good things going on in our district. And that's what we need to focus our energy on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ditto to what everybody said. You took my comment about the school psychologist. That's not an easy job. And I know, recognize them next week, but thank you to, that we recognized them twice tonight. Thank you to the staff. Everybody putting meetings together. And also kind of precursor to Friday, this is kind of a culmination of what we've been doing for months and what the team has been working on for a long time of this rezoning. And this is a long time coming to rezone. And it is going to hopefully fix some things everywhere around the county. So I know this has been a gigantic task and it's not been easy to, you know, dwindle these down to two, three options. And so I'm looking forward to doing that Friday and to getting the public feedback and moving forward. USF was great today. What a partnership we have to have a campus like that and to Cheryl, to the whole staff. I mean, that collaboratory was, was awesome. And Ms. Spray, you're, it's right. It is like a little gym right here. It's phenomenal. And I don't think people, especially within the last 10, 15 years, the amount of, of programs they have added and majors they have added. And you can live there now. And so, yeah, what a phenomenal place. And so I want to thank them again for, for having us out. And so look forward to Friday. Everybody have a good rest of your evening and we are adjourned.